Good evening. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we will have a reflection led by one of our students. Destrehan High School 11th grader Kaitlyn Housewright will lead us in a moment of reflection. Kaitlyn is a member of the Future Leaders of America Club, the Destrehan High School Beta Club, the National Honor Society, the National English Honor Society. She runs cross-country for DHS, maintains a 4.0 GPA, and is active in the Girl Scouts of America. She is a member of Grace Point Church in Destrehan and volunteers at the Matthew 2535 Food Pantry. Can we all please stand? And after that, Mr. Smith will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'll bow your heads with me. Lord God, thank you for the people here tonight, for the facility here to host this event. Lord God, please give this group wisdom and guidance as they make decisions. Provide a hand of safety over our community and our parish. Please open the minds of the people here tonight. And, Lord God, I just thank you again for giving us everyone here, bringing us all together, creating this community, and just showing us love through everyone who works so hard for all of the students and all of the teachers. In your son's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kaitlyn, for those kind words, and best of luck this school year for the remainder of the year. I call to order the St. Charles Parish Public School Board meeting for December 13, 2023, and let the record show that all members are in attendance, along with our Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and our Board Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. The first order, the first order of business is 2.01, which is a flag presentation proclamation. And could I have Ms. Karen Boudreaux from District 4 please read that for us?
Be my honor, President. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is dedicated to develop empathetic, involved, productive, and responsible citizens, and whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recognizes the importance of unity, patriotism, and the symbols that represent our shared values, and whereas the flag of our great nation, when flown over our Capitol, symbolizes the enduring principles of democracy, liberty, and justice for all. Now therefore it be resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board hereby proclaims its honor and gratitude in receiving a flag flown over our Capitol, and be it further resolved that this proclamation be recorded in the official records of St. Charles Parish Public Schools and shared with stakeholders and broader community as a symbol of our shared values. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreaux, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? At this time, I'd like to invite community member and former school board member, Mr. Clarence Sunny Sawa, to the podium for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening to everyone present here, especially the school board members, superintendent, and of course, our board secretary. I said, not our board secretary, but your board secretary. But anyway, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to make this presentation. It was something that I wanted to do before I left the board, but things didn't work out like I wanted to. But what I'd like to do is read the first proclamation, Mr. Oakland, and it reads, "The flag of the United States of America, just as to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on September 25, 2023, at the request of the Honorable Troy A. Carter, Senior, a member of Congress, in recognition of the St. Charles Parish Public School System in Luling, Louisiana." And I have four flags to give away. One for the school system, one for Hornville High School, which I graduated from, one for the Hornville High School Junior ROTC, and one for the Destrehan High School Air Force Junior ROTC. So I guess everyone's going to come down, Mr. President, and I'll make the presentations.
At this time, any board members, anyone? If none, please cast your vote. So Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and I will join Destrehan High School Principal Jason Marder and Hornville High School Principal Jose Gonzalez, accompanied by junior ROTC representatives, to formally receive the flags donated by Mr. Sawa.
Thank you very much.
that beautiful rendition of "America the Beautiful" during the presentation. Thank you, Patrick. Next item of business is 2.02, which is a resolution in memory of Ms. Marie Cameron. And Mr. Al Sufferin, can you please read that for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Cameron was a wonderful teacher for our school system for 27 and 1/2 years, and she was an even better person. She is dearly missed by her family and friends, many of which are here this evening. Resolution in memory of Mrs. Marie Cameron. Whereas Mrs. Marie Cameron served as an educator for 27 and 1/2 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System and was a board member for the St. Charles Public Schools Foundation, and whereas Mrs. Marie Cameron taught at St. Rose Elementary School for 10 years and New Sarpy Elementary School for 17 and 1/2 years, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mrs. Marie Cameron its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the December 13, 2023 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Cameron's family. And I move to adopt this resolution.
Is there a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mrs. Weber? Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. Next up on the agenda is recognitions. 3.01 is recognition of Christmas card winner, Piper Santos. The annual Christmas card contest is held for students to compete for the honor of having the design selected as the board's official Christmas card. The 2023 winner is Piper Santos, a 5th grade student at RJVIA Elementary School. At this time, myself and the superintendent will present a framed official school board card to Piper.
Students. Destrehan High School students placed first at the district swim meet. Boys 200-yard medley relay team, Colin Candibat, Joseph Culver, Mickey Kidder, and Nathan Noel. breaststroke, Colin Candibat. Placing first in the 100-yard backstroke and 200-yard individual medley and individual medley metro champ, Nathan Noel. Destrehan High School students placed at the state swim meet. Second place for 200-yard individual medley and third place for 100-yard backstroke, Nathan Noel. First place and state champion for the 200-yard individual medley and 100-yard breaststroke, Before we take the picture, please direct your attention to the screen for a look at his incredible season. Named to the all-state district volleyball first team and offense MVP, Mariah Mott. High school students were named to the all-district football first team. Teams. Hornville High School volleyball team is the district champion. Coach Mindy LeBeuf and the volleyball team, please come forward for a picture. On behalf of head coach Marcus Scott, I ask all coaches and the football team to come
So at this time, I'd like to thank everyone who was recognized tonight. But if you'd like to leave, feel free to leave. We'll take a short recess before we resume the meeting, but want to thank everybody who had recognized and good luck for the rest of the year. Okay, we'll turn to the business portion of our meeting now. The first order of business is 4.01, which is the board meeting minutes from November 13, 2023 committee meetings, and the November 15, 2023 board meeting, also the November 17 and 28 insurance committee meeting as presented to the board.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the November 13, 2023 committee meetings, November 15, 2023 board meeting, and November 17 and November 28, 2023 insurance committee meetings.
A second.
Let's have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mrs. Weber. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And those board meeting minutes are adopted. Next is 4.02, which is before and after school care program modifications. To enhance and sustain efficient and fiscally responsible processes and operations that provide a safe environment for students and staff, the cost of multiple additional supports and staffing needs have been incurred by the before and after school care, which is known as the BASCC program since 2021. Monthly financial records for the BASCC program indicate that an increase in program fees is needed as well as other program modification. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the before and after school childcare program modifications.
Let's have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
I just have one thing that I want to say. I think it's important that when people realize the increase in costs, that they also go and look at the surrounding areas, what we provide, what we provide at the cost that we provide, and understand why there needs to be an increase. I think it's important to know what other people in the surrounding areas charge for this.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreau. Anyone else? If none, please cast your vote. And that passes as well. Next is 4.03, which is accounts payable for the month of November 2023. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of November 2023 in the total amount of $6,161,290.
Second.
Let's have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mrs. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.03 passes and will allow Mr. Ronald White pay the bills. All right, next up is 4.04, which is bid acceptance of Hornville High School Building A Commons Area and Digital Media Renovations Project. The Hornville High School Building A Commons Area and Digital Media Renovations Project is a 2022 bond issue project. The construction budget for the Hornville High School Building A Commons Area and Digital Media Renovation Project was $1.5 million. Bids were received from four contractors on Tuesday, November 7, 2023. The lowest bid was received from Taylor Enterprises of Louisiana LLC Tella Construction in the amount of $1,457,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest base bid will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
I'm sorry, I move that we approve this, this project.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. And I'd just like to make a note that the cost is $1,457,000. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, the architect for that project is here from Jackson, Mississippi, and I was wondering if he'd like to justify his long trip here to say a few words about the project, Mr. William McElroy.
Mr. McElroy, could you step to the...
Good evening, all. It is a delight to be with you, and we relish in being in service to you, and we take that very seriously. We are hopeful that the delivery will be, we have an acronym at M3A. We say PROJECT should sit, S-I-T. That is stimulate, inspire, and transform the lives and the experience and the opportunities of the users of our buildings. And we think that this has a very special opportunity to impact the students in a way that enhances their performance and their day-to-day experience and pride and identity and association with the facility. So it is with great delight that we are happy to be in your service, and we expect a thrilling delivery. So with that, we thank you, and we take your trust very serious, and we won't let you down. Thank you immensely.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. If no other comments, please cast your vote. And 4.04 is approved. Next is 4.05, which is bid acceptance for Destran High School and Hornville High School baseball and softball turf projects. The Destran High School and Hornville High School and softball, and softball turf project is approved project under the Phase Two Long Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities. The construction budget for the Destran High School and Hornville High School baseball and softball turf project was $5 million. Bids were received from six contractors on Thursday, November 16, 2023. The lowest base bid, including alternate one, was received from Athletic Turf Solutions LLC in the amount of $4,820,000. According to the engineer, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest base bid, including alternate one, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid, including alternate one, submitted by Athletic Turf Solutions LLC for the Destran High School and Hornville High School baseball and turf project.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.05 is approved. Next is 4.06, which is bid authorization request for JB Martin Elevator Project. The JB Martin Elevator Project is an approved project of the 2022 bond issue. The construction plans for the JB Martin Elevator Project have been completed by the engineer and are ready for bid. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the bid authorization request for the JB Martin Elevator Project.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.06 is adopted. Next, 4.07 is bid authorization request for central office renovation and expansion project. The board is committed to providing a safe and conducive environment for learning and working. Therefore, maintaining modern facilities is a priority. In keeping with the priority of maintaining modern facilities, the central office complex has been identified as a facility in need of modification. The central office complex is over 40 years old, and a renovation is necessary in order to modernize and increase the capacity of our boardroom to ensure ADA and fire marshal compliance, provide additional storage space for the Dr. Rodney R. Lefon Performing Arts Center, expand and improve warehouse storage and operations, and create space for state mandated records retention. Partial funding of this project will be allocated from hurricane item-related insurance proceeds that are earmarked specifically for a records retention and storage facility. The renovation will also include safety enhancements and will allow for additional professional development space and will streamline meeting room efficiencies. The construction plans for central office renovation and expansion project have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the bid authorization request for central office renovation and expansion project.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.07 is adopted. 4.08 is a resolution to approve the property sale of the Booty Adult Learning Center at 13771 Old Spanish Trail in Booty. The former Booty Adult Learning Center site located at 13771 Old Spanish Trail in Booty, Louisiana is currently being leased by the Ark of St. Charles Parish. The property will not be needed by, for district use. Therefore, the district is seeking approval to sell the Booty Adult Learning Center property to the Ark of St. Charles Parish. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution, resolution for the property sale of Booty Adult Learning Center at 13771 Old Spanish Trail in Booty, Louisiana to the Ark of St. Charles Parish.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.08 resolutions approved. Next, 4.09 is a request for proposal for digital imaging systems. In an effort to improve the efficiency and management of public records and documentation in connection with St. Charles Parish Public Schools' record retention schedule as approved by the State of Louisiana, the district is seeking a request for proposals for a new digital imaging system. The current system in place is being utilized by three departments. The district is looking to expand our capabilities and functionality to include documentation prepared by additional departments and schools as well as revisit the existing solution. This agenda item is reviewed at the Technology Committee meeting of the board on December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for a digital imaging system.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mrs. Weber. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.09 is approved. 4.10 is a proposal acceptance for internet access and wide area network connection. Proposals were sought for internet access and wide area network connection for the district. These services will enable the district to provide internet access to all sites in order to facilitate business functionality, support teaching, and provide web-based instructional resources. E-rate funding, if attained, will significantly reduce the cost of these services to the district. Proposals were received from two vendors and scored by a committee. After scoring the proposals, AT&amp;T is the recommended vendor. This, this item was reviewed at the Technology Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the proposal from AT&amp;T for internet access and wide area network connection.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Cody. Any discussion? I would like to point out that at a cost of $551,623, which is an approximate three-year total. Please cast your vote. And 4.10 is approved. Next is 4.11, which is personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item is reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 11, 2023, and is aligned with GO C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And 4.11 is approved. 4.12 is the election of president of the board. Board policy 2.12, officers of the board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president of the, the next year.
Mr. President, I nominate Mr. Ellis Alexander as the 2024 St. Charles Parish School Board President.
Second. Let's have a motion by Mrs. Weber and a second by Mr. Gregson.
I move that the field be closed for nomination of president of the St. Charles Parish Public School System for 2024.
Let's have a motion by Mr. Smith to close nominations. Any objections? Being none, so Mr. Ellis, excuse me, Mr. Ellis Alexander, you're elected board president for 2024 by acclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do I take over now? You're looking at me, I thought...
I thought you might want to say something.
The way you're looking at me, I thought you were...
No, everything's good, all good.
Yeah, but no, I just, at this point, I'd like to thank the members of the board for the trust in me to carry on as the president, the next president of St. Charles Parish School Board, and I'll do my very best.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Congratulations and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next up is 4.13, which is the election of the vice president of the board. Board policy 2.12, officers of the board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks... president to perform various tasks as divine, define in official policies of the board. President, two, board, excuse me, policy, board policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as vice president of board and another, president of board and another serve as vice president.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mr. John Smith to be the vice president of the 2024 school board.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreau and a second by Mrs. Weber to nominate Mr. John Smith as vice president of the board.
Mr. President, I move that we close nominations.
So I have a motion by Mr. Alexander to close nominations. So by nominations being closed and only Mr. John Smith being nominated, uh, he is elected 2024 vice president by acclamation. Like to say anything or just?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to the board for, um, this expression of confidence in my leadership. I will do everything I can during the coming year to support the elected president and do everything within my power to carry out the responsibilities of the office of vice president of St. Charles Parish Public School District.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and congratulations. Next is closing items. 5.01 is standing committee reports. If there's any chair of any committee that'd like to give a report of the committees, meetings that took place, can please do so at this time.
Mr. President, the technology committee, uh, consisting of Scott, Cody, Becky Weber, and myself, met on Monday, December 11th. We discussed two items, an RFP for digital imaging system and a proposal, uh, acceptance for access to internet and WAN, wide area network access, uh, which was approved earlier this evening, a few minutes ago, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the finance and audit committee, uh, consisting of myself, Mrs. Boudreau, and Mr. Alexander, held a meeting on Monday, December 11th. The committee covered, uh, two items. Both items were on the agenda for the full board to consider during this meeting and were approved. Those two items were the before and after school childcare program modifications and accounts payable for the month of November, 2023. And that concludes this committee report. Mr. President, I'd also like to mention that, um, as chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund, just like to report that the Board of Trustees will be meeting, uh, tomorrow morning, Thursday, December 14th, to consider new scholarship applications.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, the capital improvements committee met on Monday, December 11th, and that committee consists of myself, Mr. Sufferin, and you, Mr. President. We had five items on our agenda Monday night, and all of those items were brought to the board table tonight and approved. Those items were bid acceptance for Hornville High School Building A Commons Area and Digital Media Renovations Project, the bid acceptance for Destrahan High School and Hornville High School Baseball and Softball Turf Projects, the bid authorization request for the J.B. Martin Elevator Project, the bid authorization request for central office renovation and expansion project, and finally, the resolution to approve the, the property sale of the Booty Adult Learning Center. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Anyone else?
Just one, uh, point of, that I'd like to, uh, make to the board. Since this is our last meeting of the current school year, um, and we will not be meeting again until well into January, uh, just as there's a transferring of leadership on this board, there will also be a change of leadership, uh, in Baton Rouge as it relates to, uh, all of the elected officials and boards that have a direct impact on public education in this state. I'd like to ask the board to be vigilant during the, uh, time between now and the time we meet again in January with respect to, uh, positions that various elected officials at the state level and various boards that impact public education in the state of Louisiana will be announcing, uh, and will be, uh, taking action on during that time. There's every indication that, uh, there's going to be some challenges for, uh, St. Charles Parish Public Schools as well as, um, the state of Louisiana in, in general. Uh, I would also, uh, ask that immediately upon our return, uh, in January, that, uh, we schedule a meeting with our legislative delegation and with our lobbyists to begin conversation regarding, uh, the, uh, possibility of impacts and that sort of thing that will be coming down the pike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else?
Just to respond to Mr. Smith's request, I have put in a, a request with our current lobbyists to set up that meeting for January, as is.
Thank you. If not, next is 5.02, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Ken Whortling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please tune in to Channel 8 over the Christmas break to view Christmas programs hosted by our schools throughout December. These holiday programs feature the outstanding talents of the students in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Channel 8 programming schedule can be found on the district's website. On behalf of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, I want to wish all of our families, employees, and members of our community a wonderful holiday season. Holidays extend from December 22nd through January 5th. Classes will resume on Monday, January 8th, 2024. It's been an extraordinary first semester providing high-quality educational opportunities for our students. Thank you to our teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, custodians, food nutrition personnel, bus operators, distribution personnel, maintenance personnel, our school board, and all St. Charles Parish Public School staff for your commitment to this organization, each other, and most importantly, our students. We appreciate each of you. May each of you have a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season and a happy, healthy new year. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whortling.
I move that we adjourn.
Miss, we have a motion by Ms. Boudreau to adjourn. Is there any objection? Being no objection, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President.